Good evening and welcome to the March ninth, two thousand and fifteen Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Pennington lead us with the invocation. If you could rise for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance after this.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this chance to guide this great city. We pray that you keep us with strong decisions and with wise decisions. We pray that you keep the first responders safe as they deal with the protection of the city, the fire and the police. We thank you for everything you've done for us in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Pennington. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Mayor Protem Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Gottlieb.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderek.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Here.
All present, our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentation. C one is an Award of Excellence for two thousand and fourteen Troy Roads Rock from the Michigan Concrete Association. Presentation by Carrie Sutton, Director of Engineering of Southeast Michigan. And I see Steve Vendette, our city engineer. Bill Houdery. Kurt Bowensy. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carrie Sutton with the Michigan Concrete Association. Each year, the Michigan Concrete Association recognizes outstanding projects that were completed during the construction year across the state of Michigan. This year, the Troy Roads Rock Program for Concrete Pavement Repair was submitted in the category of concrete pavement repair amongst dozens of projects across the state. This project was recognized for quality and workmanship as well as complexity. As you may know, when our roads are under repair, the contractor is working diligently, coordinating closely with the engineers and planners on the projects, as many times they are working in under live construction, right next to construction, and people who are not always patient with our repair work that's going on. So it's very, very complex work, very critical work, very timely work, and this project was noted among several other projects in the metro area and stood out as an excellent project. So at our workshop awards program, Steve was there to accept the plaque, Award of Excellence City of Troy Concrete Slab Replacement Troy Roads Rock Program for two thousand and fifteen, or from last year, but it was this year that they received the award. So congratulations to the winning team. Also, Delicio Construction was the contractor and they also received recognition at the awards program.
Thank you, Carrie.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Team members.
They want to get a picture.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Carrie. Steve, did you want to say anything?
It was a long, long summer. And I think we have, we have a lot more work coming up this year. It's always exciting for us and not so exciting for the motorists traveling through, but we try our best to go as easy on them as we can. So, thank you.
Well, yeah, good job, Steve. And I think you're going to see a happy public in Troy when the frost and the freeze ends here shortly and other cities are dealing with potholes and ours are almost nonexistent. So thanks for all your help there. Thank you, Carrie. C two is an update from Congressman Dave Trot, but unfortunately, Dave has the flu. So we'll ask Dave to come back when he's feeling better. So C three is a delinquent property tax payment deadline information with a presentation from Andy Meisner, the Oakland County Treasurer. So I'd ask Andy to come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and distinguished staff. Appreciate this opportunity to be with you this evening for just a few moments. Good evening, Congressman, Councilman. I'm not Dave Trot, although I hope to be in many ways. Just kidding. The purpose of the visit to Troy was in part to send my respects from Oakland County. You know, I think it's no surprise that Troy is, you know, one of our superstars and, you know, that we are incredibly proud to have Troy within our county. You know, the fiscal management practices that you guys have adopted, you know, I think are in the spirit of Oakland County and we commend you for that and for being such a great place to live and work and it's a great place. And I was actually just reading a Troy Times article about the property values and I was excited to see that your growth in values outpaced the county. Looks like maybe twelve point one eight percent for fourteen and I think the county was a little bit behind that at eight. But that is no doubt an indication of the good management and good quality of life. So, you know, my compliments in that regard. I had three short items to go through with you this evening and I'm going to be quick because I know that you've got a lot of items on the agenda. The first one relates to the property tax foreclosure process. And we right now have a partnership whereby the city of Troy collects the current year property taxes and then we partner, you know, with the county to collect taxes when they become delinquent. Now, my office is very devoted to preventing property tax foreclosure, which is why we offer payment plans for anybody that is willing to take responsibility for their delinquency, but also to pay down that amount and to receive, you know, a redemption certificate so that the property is not lost. This March thirty first is the deadline for property tax foreclosure for properties with delinquent taxes from two thousand and twelve and prior. So really, my number one request is please help me get the word out to our mutual constituents, whether it be through civic organizations, through our churches or temples or gudwaraas, whatever it might be. We really have folks among us who are in need and are facing tax foreclosure, might have a pile of bills in the corner. If we can get them into our office before March thirty first, we can get them on a payment plan and we can save their property. After April first, I should say, we can't do that. Second thing I wanted to say is that there's a program called Step Forward Michigan and it is a program that helps pay delinquent property taxes, interest and fees for families who are eligible. The program just received an additional thirty million dollars. To date, there have been six hundred and seventy-two Oakland County families that have received funding through this program and that's six hundred and seventy-two delinquent tax amounts equalling five million dollars that aren't shifted onto the, you know, onto the rest of the taxpayers. So I'm asking for your help in getting the word out about the Step Forward Michigan Loan Rescue Program. You have an item before you, Mayor and council members, that is a cheat sheet that we put together. You know, some of these government programs are very difficult and bureaucratic to deal with. So what you've got there and what folks can find, you know, we could send the link so that you could put it on the Troy website perhaps, but what you've got before you is a cheat sheet and that is a screenshot of the twenty-three-page online application for Step Forward. And I'm an attorney and I mean, I had trouble, you know, answering some of these questions and so you can imagine what some of our constituents might face in trying to navigate this, knowing that there could be thirty thousand dollars at the end of the process. So that cheat sheet kind of has little word bubbles anywhere that somebody might get tripped up on a question and with thirty million dollars added to that program, it's really in our best fiscal interest and I think in our best moral interest for us to help these families save their homes. Now, I promised to be quick. The third order of business that I wanted to share relates to something called the local government investment pool. Now, you know, the truth is, is that not every community in Oakland County has got the staffing and sophistication that Troy has. You know, you guys are special and so you operate at a very high level. In my office, we have a full-time investment staff and we operate a portfolio right now that thirty-six local cities, villages and townships participate in. And, you know, this isn't anything that you have to do. It's just an option that's available to you if, you know, your financial team should find that you've got a bit of cash that you don't need for sixty-plus days. Because we're investing in bigger chunks, we sometimes can get a little bit more yield while still ensuring the same safety that is required of us through Public Act Twenty, which basically says conservative investment. So the third packet that is with you is just a little bit of a brochure about our local government investment pool. You know, it's not a ton of money, but it adds up. You know, the city of Novi, for instance, which is one of the participants, you know, they earned a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in interest last year and that's going to pay some bills. West Bloomfield, you know, has participated. They earned six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars through our local government investment pool. And I'm going to leave this maybe with your city manager. This is a list of all of our current deposits. So it'll give you a feel for, you know, what sort of investments that we make. We're talking about certificates, certificates of deposit, agencies, sometimes commercial paper, but these are very safe vanilla sorts of investments that focus on principal preservation. And, you know, as of today, our portfolio is at one point two billion dollars and we're earning ninety-seven point five basis points on that money or just under one percent. And so everything is going very smoothly here. You know, it's just a question of whether or not that is an option that meets with your cash flow needs and your ability to earn a little bit of extra interest on your money. And if you do choose to participate, we ask participating local governments just to pass a resolution, you know, adopting an agreement that we're going to participate. And, you know, with that, I would be happy to entertain any questions and, you know, I gave you my card. My number is four two one, Andy. That's my cell phone and you and the citizens should feel free to contact me. We are, you know, at your service at Oakland County. Hopefully, I stayed on my time limit.
It was perfect.
Okay.
Good. Any questions for the Oakland County Treasurer, Andy Meisner?
I think you covered it. I would ask maybe city administration to take a look at putting that link on our webpage if we could for the Step Forward.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll send that over and, yeah, we appreciate the word, getting the word out about that one.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is C four, the Troy Youth Assistance Parenting Month. So I will move down to the podium if I could ask Robin Beltramini from Troy Youth Assistance to meet me there. I have a proclamation that I'd like to present.
It's kind of like a wedding.
Kind of like a wedding?
Yeah, where you look at the congregation.
You got it. Yeah, I remember before we used to always face this way and you'd get to see the back, but.
I like this.
Yeah. But anyways, Robin, it's an honor for me to present a proclamation for Parenting Awareness Month, which is March of two thousand and fifteen. And I think it's always important to read this into the record because parenting is what got us here, right?
So whereas March is Parenting Awareness Month in the state of Michigan and Parenting Awareness Month celebrates people who are raising children. And whereas Parenting Awareness Month seeks to draw public attention to the critical importance of parenting in helping children to become healthy, caring and contributing citizens. And whereas Parenting Awareness Month seeks to promote education and resources for developing parenting skills throughout the year, encourages the development of local parent networks and encourages everyone to participate in the lives of all of our children. And whereas Troy Youth Assistance, a volunteer-driven nonprofit organization, is committed to strengthening youth and families by preventing and reducing juvenile delinquency, child neglect and child abuse through the community involvement. And whereas Troy Youth Assistance provides classes and programs such as Active Parenting Now, Healthy Teen Relationships, Parenting and Boundaries, Parenting Cafe, Trends, Friends and Fatal Ends and Teenage Sex, At What Price. And whereas Troy Youth Assistance actively participates in the lives of our communities' families through their workshops, classes, camp scholarships, Mentors Plus Program, Youth Recognition Awards and a number of programs. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Troy hereby proclaim the month of March two thousand and fifteen as Parent Awareness Month and be it further resolved that we invite all Troy residents to recognize and celebrate the vital role Troy Youth Assistance plays in our community and we support all their efforts and resources that promote, encourage, support and educate the community on parenting issues. It's presented this ninth day in March two thousand and fifteen. It's signed by myself and all members of the council. Congratulations, Robin, and thanks for all you do for the city and what TYE does also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to return to my seat and allow Robin to address the council. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate your support. TYE appreciates your support, but this I accept as a parent, for all parents in Troy. And I'll tell you a little bit about why this is important. You all have heard me say for years, kids didn't ask to be here and they didn't come with an owner's manual. So Troy Youth Assistance can help bridge that knowledge gap and we're lucky. The county, the school district and the city of Troy in the past have seen fit to support us. And what that does for the public of Troy is it gives us counseling services at no charge. It gives us a video and print library that is free for any parent in Troy to borrow a book, a video, a pamphlet on where to go for help or the help itself. How do you talk to your kids about an issue? What is the trend? How do I learn this? Where do I talk to other parents about these things? There was a list of our classes here. Healthy Teen Relationships is a new one that because of your support this year, we were able to put together and that, that actually will happen on the eighteenth of March at the Fire and Police Training Center. It's a parent and teen workshop and it's facilitated by educators from Haven. They helped us put that together. They know a little bit about healthy and unhealthy relationships. Again, in March, because it's Parenting Month, Active Parenting for Teens will be offered at the Services Building in the city of Troy for the school district. All of these programs are free because of your support and we can offer them and we can find new ones based on trends in the community or requests from a corpus of parents. We can do that because you help us and I hope that you would put us in your budget again next year too, because we do make a difference in the community, not just with the recognition events and the positive reinforcements, but programs like this, teaching and helping parents be parents, be good parents, to raise well-rounded citizens who can toe the line, think for themselves and be good social role models for all of us. So we thank you for your support. I know the names of these courses, I will remind you, seem to be the same year after year, but the content changes and sometimes the facilitator changes based on what's important in Troy's community today. I mean, we've had the Teenage Sex at What Price. We even had Pam Stenzel come. The video that we use was shot in Troy and so it's Troy Kids on that video, but the discussion, because the panel that leads it is different every time, the parents who are part of that discussion, the kids who are part of that discussion every time, it's always different. The smartphone programs has evolved. I think we're in our sixth iteration. They are different, even though the names are the same. So I caution you about that. Don't say, oh, I've been there. I've seen that. Not necessarily. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Robin. C five is Troy's sixtieth anniversary, which is from nineteen fifty-five to two thousand and fifteen, a presentation by Cindy Stewart, Community Affairs Director, and I see Lorraine Campbell, Director of the historic Troy Historic Village here. Good evening.
Good evening. It's our pleasure once again to give you a little update on the sixtieth anniversary. First, we're going to hear, Lorraine's going to give you a little history snippet.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. You know, the fact that Troy never had that iconic nineteenth-century Main Street and Business District has challenged leadership for a long time and continues to do so. Our planners have always tried to find ways to create community outside the traditional context of a traditional downtown. And during the nineteen sixties, the city planners proposed three solutions to create gathering places for businesses and for socialization. The first proposal was the Big Beaver Corridor for major offices, businesses and commercial developments. The second solution was a city center, a one-square-mile area for commerce and culture, something we're still working on. The third solution was the Civic Center, a component of the city center that would house your government's offices. Now, in nineteen sixty-two, Villacan Layman, who were your planners at that time, conducted a study to select the location for the Troy Civic Center. There were twelve parcels considered and they're the twelve parcels you see on the screen. They were graded following up against six different criteria. The best site would be geographically central, a minimum of fifty acres, near the population center of the city. And please bear in mind that in nineteen sixty-two, the population of Troy was slightly more than nineteen thousand people. It would be square, not irregularly shaped or long and skinny or dog-legged. It would not be adjacent to industry or a site that could be developed residentially. The site should not block access to or route traffic through a residential area and it should have safe access from north-south as well as east-west roads and not straddle or be divided by a major thoroughfare. So the best sites were L, if you could click, and H. Now, L was a little bit too small and that site was located on the southeast corner of Waddles at Livernoy, just kitty corner from the Troy Historic Village. H was considered a good site, but it lacked access from Livernoy. However, eventually that problem was solved with a road we call Town Center Drive. It was also extremely convenient to I seventy-five. So in April nineteen sixty-three, the city purchased Site H from Helen Huber, the mother of then-Mayor Robert Huber, through two separate transactions. The city bought seventy-seven acres for the Civic Center and then they bought ten acres of wooded land on the north end of the parcel. That land would be named Philip J. Huber Park and it's adjacent to the tennis bubble today. The total cost for the property was a hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars, paid over four years at four and a half percent interest. A new city hall was built in nineteen sixty-six and that, ladies and gentlemen, is why you are seated at this location this evening.
Thank you, Lorraine.
The city, all of the different facilities and departments in the city, we planned a lot of events for this year. We're just going to, I'm going to go through some of the ones that are coming up through our party in June. Saturday, I don't know how many of you were there for the community center's thirteenth birthday. They kind of did this in conjunction with the sixtieth. They had about twenty-one hundred people go through there from ten AM until nine PM when they ended with a concert, The Square Pegs. The Troy Library has also been celebrating awesome things born in the fifties. They had Play-Doh Day. They did the family-friendly drive-in. They had a beat poetry with M.L. Liebler and they had a crossroads family band. So they've had hundreds of people. Upcoming events at the library, they're going to say happy birthday to Barbie, who is also having a big day this year, a big celebration. They're also doing a middle school murder mystery. The teens, they want to do a lot more with the middle school and the high schoolers so they do this on a Friday night when the library's closed. The recreation department is doing the Jim Savage has, as you all know, he's been doing those monthly dances. Well, they're doing a special one on April ninth and that's in, that's the community-wide dinner dance held to commemorate the city's sixtieth birthday. So they'd like you all to come for dinner and dancing and the fee, they've got sponsors Recreation is also doing this year, from April through August, they're doing Troy Stroll and Roll at various locations throughout our parks. You can walk, ride your bike, rollerblade, skateboard or walk your dog. And the first one on April twenty-fifth is a dog event. All these dates also and events are in the Troy Today and on the website. Maple syrup time is a big thing for the nature center, of which they do on March seventh, which we just had, the fourteenth and twenty-first, and they work with the Historic Village to talk about the first settlers to purchase the land. They're also doing a Feathered Friends Festival featuring live hawks and owls and then information about bluebird nesting. They're doing the Nature and History of Firefighters Park. They're going to lead a hike at the park and discuss the history and the nature found at firefighters. They have also invited Larson Middle School Jazz Band on May twenty-first. They're going to have a spring concert at the nature center. And June through August, the citywide summer scavenger hunt is the joint project with the nature center and the Historic Village. Families can explore Troy as it celebrates sixty years as a city. The Historic Village, they're going to be doing House of Worship tours. We have approximately seventy houses of worship, so they're going to do five of them from March through August. You can, you meet at the House of Worship and they're going to talk about the history. They're also doing on April twenty-first, an evening to embrace excellence, celebrating Troy's sixtieth anniversary and the growth of the Big Beaver Corridor. And where will it be? At Huntington Bank on Big Beaver Corridor. That's our major sponsor. June twentieth, they're going to do Many Stories, One Heritage. They're going to celebrate the contribution And June through August, the Citywide Summer Scavenger Hunt is the joint project with the Nature Center and the Historic Village. Families can explore Troy as it celebrates 60 years as a city. The Historic Village, they're going to be doing House of Worship tours. We have approximately 70 Houses of Worship, so they're going to do five of them from March through August. You meet at the House of Worship, and they're going to talk about the history. They're also doing on April 21st, an Evening to Embrace Excellence, celebrating Troy's 60th Anniversary and the growth of the Big Beaver Corridor, and where will it be? At Huntington Bank on Big Beaver Corridor. That's their major sponsor. June 20th, they're going to do Many Stories, One Heritage. They're going to celebrate the contributions of our Asians, Asian-Americans, who've added so much to our multicultural community, and more details will be coming, and that's at troyhistoricvillage.org. Then in June, our big 60th Birthday Party, that's going to include food, birthday cake, games, and activities. We were able to secure from Oakland County a form of a grant, that they're going to be bringing a climbing tower, bouncer, obstacle course, and carnival package. We're going to have face painting, Dan the Critter Man, magicians, info booths. We're working on a sponsor, we can't say yet, but we're hopefully, that they're going to say yes to be our major sponsor. Beaumont Hospital's also offered to land their helicopter, so the kids and families can come and check out the hospital's helicopter. And then Troy resident Carl Caffagna and his band Sound Love, they're going to play popular favorites from every decade, from the '50s to the present. And we'll follow that at dusk with a drive-in movie. I think that's all we have for an update for now, but you can go to our website, and the Troy Today, and as all the groups, they come up with more events, we will put them out there, let you all know, and we hope you will all be attending all of them, especially the dance, Ellen. Someone wants you to dance with him.
Yeah, I think he's here tonight to speak.
I think he is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That concludes the Certificates of Recognition and Special Presentations. There are no carryover items this evening or public hearings, so we will move to public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And our first speaker is Jim Warpatinsky, Troy resident, to speak on C-5. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Council, City Staff, City Residents. I just wanted to follow on with what Cindy Stewart and Lorraine were talking about, the 60th Anniversary, more specifically, the 13th Anniversary of the Community Center. The function they had Saturday was out of sight. I never saw anything like the Community Center, it was really rocking. They had a wonderful crowd, they had a, Elaine Bo and her staff did a super job. Can't say enough about those folks. It's family-oriented, they had all the band, and the Ice Princes, and the Fun House, and all that kind of stuff. And Beaumont had their distracted driving simulator, which I tried, by the way, failed miserably. Friends of Troy Seniors, of course, were part of that, too. Friends of Troy Seniors and 920 on the Park and Emerald Food Services co-sponsored a bingo and continental breakfast for the seniors over there in the morning. So, I got to wear one of their nice lime-green T-shirts and help with the bingo. So, I just want to say, with this, all these events that Cindy and was just talking about, Elaine Bo set the bar high, so if you guys can get close to that with the rest of the events, we're golden. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Next is James Savage, Troy resident, to speak on C-5. I guess this has something to do with the dance. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council and Staff. I really just wanted to elaborate a little more on what Cindy Stewart had said about the 60th Celebration, and that is to remind people of the dancers coming up, and if I can get it on TV, I can get the flyer up for the 60th Anniversary Dance, and it will be special, it'll be a dinner catered by the crotch catering, entertainment during dinner, and a one-on-four-piece band for dancing from 7 till 10. The 60th Birthday Dance is a part of an ongoing program that we've been doing for the last year, actually. The April Dance will be the first anniversary of when we started the dancing, so it will be the city's 60th Anniversary, it will be the Community Center's 13th, I think it is, and also the dancing program's first anniversary on that day. As part of a program, what we have been trying to do is encourage young people to take up volume dancing, and I was listening to Robin Beltraminian and her program for young people, and it always occurs to me that there's a terrific encouragement for the achievers in our schools, and we have great schools, and they produce tremendous kids, and there's programs for the kids that slip through the cracks, but we seem to have this, for the kids who are just the average, they don't achieve anything special, and they graduate, and then where do they go? We're not assuming that all the kids are going to take up volume dancing, but only if one part of 1% did, it would be a great feature, and that we, right here in our community, would have somewhere to go. And there'll be no drinking, because where do you go when you're 18 and you can't drink till you're 21? And then unfortunately, I find that they go to binge drinking, and that is not good either. You know, when I was a teenager, Friday nights was the dance at the local town hall, and that's where all the kids went, and they met, and so by the time we were at drinking age at 18, but nobody had enough money for more than one beer anyhow, so it didn't make much difference. But I guess what I'm trying to say, and this goes along with what we are doing at the Troy High School, and that is provide something special for the kids that are maybe in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call on, there are three students that wish to speak this evening Do we know the names?
They've signed up under L-1, but because of the time.
Oh, I see, okay. I will call on Rihanna Elberdri first. Is this Eva also?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're here on-
Could you use the microphone, because we're recording? Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, we're here on behalf of the Troy Public Library, and we're representing the Teen Advisory Board. Ever since the controversy over keeping the library open back in 2010 and 2011, the Troy Public Library has been recognized as an exceptional institution and one vital to the City of Troy. Thanks to the funding to us from the City Council and the people of Troy, it has been extremely successful in keeping up its reputation of being a valuable asset to Troy and its population. But there's always room for improvement, and there's so much more that the Teen Advisory Board and the library can do if we had extra funding. As teens, it is an important time in our lives when we're starting to develop ourselves as part of the community, and we could do, we could do even better if we had, oh, I'm sorry, more funding to the library would help towards our eventual goal of creating a separate teen space. This area would be exclusive to teens and contain all our own materials. It would be a place to call our own, free from the rambunctious noise of the youth section and the sometimes chilling quiet of the adult. This section of the library dedicated exclusively to us has been a major project of TAB, the Teen Advisory Board, that we have been considering discussing and theorizing for over a year now. One major obstacle to this area has always been money. More funds to this, to the library as a whole, would contribute to this immensely. With this money that the library would receive, we could also further our literary collection and improve library events. A larger collection of books will not only expand and advance readers' knowledge and creativity, it will also stimulate an interest of, or passion in reading. More books can also lead to, sorry, more books can lead to more book-themed events. The library holds many educational events for people of all ages, and more funding will help enrich these events, help them more run smoothly, and attract more people to attending. With more funding, the library can enrich the events by getting more experts to host events. Our Teen Advisory Board's very own education board has come up with a tutoring program for teens with individual needs. The Troy Public Library has always been recognized as a family-friendly institution. It is known for being able to provide materials, events, and opportunities for people of any age. It's an integral part of the City of Troy and adds to the city's desirability. As a city, Troy was ranked in the top 10 best cities to live in, in all of America, by Money Magazine. Not only is the library a valuable amenity to contribute to this, but it also helps raise grades and general intelligence, which adds to the effectiveness of Troy's education system, which is also ranked extremely well. On behalf of the Teen Advisory Board and the Troy Public Library, we appeal to you to increase the funding of our library.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening and doing that for us. I also see that Ada Guani also has signed up to speak. Is Ada here this evening? No? Okay, that concludes those that have signed up to speak this evening. Is there any response from the Council table or Administration? Councilman Gottlieb.
I just want to thank the students that came and shared their thoughts and information with us. Sometimes a little intimidating, and it was, you guys did a great job. Thank you for bringing that to us.
Any other comments? There are no postponed items this evening, so we will move to regular business. There are no board or committee appointments this evening, and tonight, we will not be nominating anyone for any boards or committees this evening. Ms. Dixon.
Mayor, under I-1B, the City Council appointment, it's a confirmation of the board member that represents the Oakland County Health Department to the Building Code Board of Appeals, so it is, we're just requesting that council vote on confirming that appointment.
Is that a mayoral appointment?
It's a City Council appointment.
So, I'll defer to Mayor Protem Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. For the Building Code Board of Appeals, I'd like to put a gentleman's name, Mike Morris, forward. He's from the Oakland County Health Department, as a rep on the Board of Appeals. I'd put his name forward for approval tonight.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Campbell and supported by Councilwoman Hoderek, that we appoint Mike Morris to the Building Code of Appeals required by Chapter 79. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-3 is a request for closed session. There is a request this evening, if someone would like to move that resolution. Councilman Gottlieb?
Move that the City Council move to closed session, as identified in I-3.
Support. Moved by Councilman Gottlieb and supported by Councilman Henderson, the Troy City Council meeting closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E for a pending litigation. Discussion.
Mayor, I just want to make sure that it's as read, because there are actually two separate, two separate subsections.
As indicated, as read in I-3.
Thank you.
Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes, motion passes. I-4 is a roads presentation with an introduction by City Manager Kishnik. Are we going to defer to staff?
In two minutes, and I promise it'll only be 60 seconds, which will give them just enough time to get to the podium. But those of you who know me know that this is the best time of the year, and it's the best time of the year because of two things. Tom likes to do the budget, and Hootery, Van Dat, Bovinsip, and Mayor love to do road construction. And every time I walk into Hootery's office, he's always so happy to see me, to discuss what we could possibly do again. So, Troy Roads Rock 2 is what you have before you tonight, and it's really an opportunity for the fund balance policy to meet the infrastructure needs. You remember, we adopted a fund balance policy with a cap at 30% of expenditures and a floor at 20% of expenditures. We look back at 2014, prior-year actuals, estimated 15, and you'll see a slide at where we are currently, and where we're estimating, and where we would be if we did this $2 million Troy Roads Rock 2 program. So, what you're going to see is you're going to hear our continuing investment in infrastructure, where we minimize traffic disruptions because of the team that has put in place after last summer, utilizing the Police Department, the Engineering Department, and Kurt's Streets Group with what they call Boots on the Street, changing lights and signalizations as needed. So, after one year's experience, we're confident you will see at least of the minimized traffic disruptions. We also are going to be talking about utilizing current low-bid prices from last year for at least this, the rest of this fiscal year, and then an increase for the next year that we're seeing throughout our projects. Steve Van Dat presented that a couple of weeks ago with the Water Main Project, and it's been well documented. And then we think that we're going to take advantage of the season, which last year, we bumped up against, as you recall, because of the amount of work, because of the contractor, because of our lack of control with the Road Commission overseeing the Big Beaver Project. By doing this at the low-volume traffic season, which is in June, July, in the summertime, and when I talked to Nate Forbes, I see John Mizak's here, but when I talked to Nate Forbes from Somerset, his, I said, "When would be a good time for Somerset to do a project again?" Of course, he didn't say never, like you might be thinking. He said after that June, after school gets out, July timeframe. So, with that, you're going to see a great presentation that's full of information, and is on our website as we speak for everyone's per use, per view. And Kurt Bovinsip is going to start the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. 50 degrees and sunny, it's beginning to smell like construction season, so, but not to make light of it. You know, we're going to go a little bit back in history and just kind of go over what we completed in 2015. I know many are familiar with the Troy Roads Rock program, because most of us drive the major roads, but there was a considerable investment in 2014 in our local road system of a $2 to $1.8 million. And again, in our major roads, the segment replacement that we saw in the Troy Roads Rock program, which includes the city portion and the portion that was administered by the county. And we also won several awards, one of which was presented tonight, and one that you may not be aware of is the American Public Works Association Michigan Chapter. We won the Project of the Year for Government Cooperation, so, which was a nice award to receive, and again, the Michigan Concrete Association Award of Excellence, as you saw earlier tonight. Again, a recap of where the funds were spent, a total of $12 million were invested into the major roads through the Troy Roads Rock program, of which $5.6 million was the city funds, which included the Long Lake Road, Livernoy to Rochester area, probably the one we're most familiar with, because that was one of the best examples of segment replacement that we've seen ever here in the City of Troy, without doing a full, full road replacement. Big Beaver, east of Rochester, again, was city funds, Dequender and John R. And then along with that, we saw the outside funding of $6.4 million, which was the Feather State in LDFA, the county being Big Beaver, west of I-75, Crooks Road up near- Crooks Road up near I seventy-five and Square Lake, Long Lake, the overlay, Adams to Troy High School, and, uh, Bellingham, the intersection of Bellingham and Big Beaver near Automation Alley. That was a contribution from the L D F A. Example of before and after what we saw is, again, another good example of what we saw is, is segment replacement. And just to show you that, um, you know, our efforts of infrastructure investment, which is, in my opinion, bar none to any community around us, we are seeing that impact, that positive impact. The, the graph represents what we call our Pacer rating, which is from DPW and from engineering. That's what we use to go over the road system to see what roads we should concentrate on of those, um, almost three hundred miles, just over three hundred miles in Troy. So you can see the good going up in two thousand fourteen from two thousand thirteen, uh, the fair and the poor going down. So it's a real good representation that we're making a positive impact with our investment here in the city of Troy. Um, and with that, it deserves some protection, and, and Chief Mayor will go over some protections that we're taking.
Mayor, Council, wanted to do our part to, do what we could to keep our roads safe and not deteriorate anymore. We assigned two trained police officers, motor carrier officers, Officer Linton and Stansbury, to work, uh, directed enforcement on truck violations. Uh, they worked mainly, uh, overweight vehicles. In the course of doing that, they did two hundred ninety hours of enforcement during the frost law time period of March nineteenth to April twenty-sixth, and... Thank you. You see, they wrote almost a hundred and twenty, uh, commercial vehicle citations on trucks. They also removed three unsafe vehicles from the roadway. There was a total of almost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in fines that were imposed for that, and seventy percent of those fines came back to the city of Troy, and that was almost a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we're very proud of the work that they did, especially taking those, uh, unsafe vehicles off the roadway. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as you know, uh, roads is a continual investment, um, and there's still work to be done in two thousand fifteen. What you see before you is, uh, is what we're, we have basically on the ground, what we call on the ground in two thousand, spring of two thousand fifteen. One point three million dollars have been, been identified this spring to be replaced. That's, is in the current budget. Um, also in the current budget is an additional one point three million dollars towards local roads. That's where we'll use the Pacer ratings. We'll look at the, after the spring thaw, and we'll look at identifying those roads. And in Section nineteen, which is Coolidge and Waddles area, that is scheduled for an overlay, that's an asphalt, asphalt roads in that community, in that subdivision, and we will be overlaying at about a tune of one million dollars there. So again, looking at the major roads, um, and where we need to see some additional investment there, um, Big Beaver, again, from west of I seventy-five to Adams. As you recall, this was part of the Troy Roads Rock Program last year, however, it was part of the county project. The city had limited oversight over that project. We helped with traffic control. Um, we had limited input of where that money should be spent and identifying the defects in the concrete. So, uh, we're suggesting that a million, additional million dollars be spent on Big Beaver, west of I seventy-five, to make that road, um, to what we would call a Long Lake standard, if you will. And half a million dollars to John R. Uh, John R. was, um, was one of the worst roads that we concentrated on last year, however, we concentrated on the through lanes, uh, so we did not concentrate funds into your center turn lanes or your de-acceleration lanes. So a half a million dollars to catch those, um, that were, did not have the funding of last year. And Dequinder, uh, Dequinder, we did not go north of Big Beaver with the Troy Roads Rock Program, uh, so again, this is to catch those areas that we were, did not have the funding to do last year. And when we looked at these roads, um, you know, from an engineer standpoint or from a maintenance standpoint, that we looked, there's, there's many defects in a road that would cause, uh, replacement. Uh, I know we've, we've heard a lot about ASR, um, which, which is not something that we really looked at for Big Beaver, Dequinder, and John R. We really looked at the rideability. So we looked at the defects as highlighted in the picture, uh, those, those transverse joints deteriorating, um, something that would cause someone to say, "This is not a good road." Um, so that's where these funds are being proposed to be spent on those, those rideability issues out of Big Beaver, John R., and Dequinder. And to go over the current contract with Delicio, I think everyone's familiar with Delicio, um, they were the city's contractor and it was a, a contract awarded last year, um, and they were a contract with the city of Troy previous to that. Many advantages that we saw in Delicio throughout the years, um, less lane closures, they're more conscious than we've ever seen in a contractor in, in how they do their work. And when I say less lane closures, most contractors will take that extra lane, uh, whether it's to pour the concrete or remove the concrete, where Delicio, uh, works up a plan where they don't need that additional lane all the time. So they really, really are conscious about our, our constituents and, and the people that drive through the city of Troy. Um, they're willing to do night work, and we saw that on Town Center Drive last fall. Um, in order to get it done, cold weather was approaching, they brought in light towers, they worked earlier in the morning, received a special work permit from the engineering staff, um, to do that work, and, and that job was completed fully, uh, before the snow flies. And pours curb and segment at the same time, again, I know it gets a little confusing, but a lot of contractors like to pour that curb, let it cure four to five, even up to seven days before they pour the slab that abuts it, where Delicio does integral curbs, so they pour it all at once. So we don't have that additional five to seven days, um, that you would, might see in other contractors. Uh, they do all the work. They don't sub out, um, the removal of the concrete or, or the saw cutting of the concrete, so they're not waiting on another contractor to be able to perform their work so they can do theirs. Again, an increase in efficiency. Um, and they were, they, if you remember last year, we call it the hometown discount, however, so, I think someone today reminded me that they're really not from Troy. No one from Delicio lives here, to my knowledge, but they like working for the city of Troy. Um, and they were forty-four percent less last year on the Troy Roads Rock than the next highest bidder. So, um, shows, shows that Delicio really cares for the city of Troy. They like work, doing work for us. And also, uh, mentioned that they were twenty-three percent in the Troy Roads Rock Program below our engineers estimate. But as, uh, City Manager Kishnik mentioned, as we're seeing in the industry, we're seeing an increase. Uh, there's an increase in, in demand, uh, there's an increase in material costs because of that, and there's an increase in the regional demands in trucking, as presented by City Engineer Steve Van Dat of the Water Main Project. So we're seeing an overall infrastructure increase, um, in cost. And because of this, um, when compared to the average of the other three bidders in two thousand and fourteen, Delicio is proposing a seventeen percent increase in next year's contract. So they, they have option to renew, they propose the city, uh, seventeen percent increase when compared to the other three bidders last year. We went to, uh, and I'll get into this maybe in a little bit more detail when we present the, um, the contract extension memo, but, um, we did go to the other, the bidders last year, and we asked, would there be an increase? And of course, there would be an increase. Everyone's seen an increase. So, um, realistically, that's seventeen percent, maybe even a little lower if we were to ask them to provide pricing and go through that bid process again. With Delicio extending their contract, they will, um, they will, they will complete the contract under the same conditions and terms, um, which includes warranty, um, which I know is important. Again, we went through protection with the police department's offers, and, and Steve Van Dat will, will go over some of the warranty details.
Uh, thanks, Kurt. As Kurt mentioned, uh, the proposed contract extension with Delicio, like all of our construction contracts, requires a, uh, two-year, uh, warranty, and, uh, this two-year warranty covers defects, uh, material defects and, uh, I'm sorry, defects in workmanship and materials. And ordinarily, what happens, uh, is at the end of the project, we'll do a final inspection, create a punch list, a list of items to be repaired, the contractor takes care of it, and the contract is closed out, and then over the, uh, two years following that, we expect, we inspect it periodically if there are any defects in, uh, workmanship or materials, those are brought to the attention of the contractor and they are repaired at no charge to the city. And that's exactly what occurred last year on Beach Road, uh, where that asphalt, uh, done by Cadillac Asphalt, was down for about, uh, a year and a half, and, uh, uh, we noticed this condition occurring, which, uh, we felt was a defect in, uh, workmanship. And, uh, so last, uh, year, I brought a, an item to you for approval, uh, for Cadillac Asphalt to repair this. Those repairs were at, uh, no charge to the city. There were other repairs related to the harsh winter that we had, that Cadillac Asphalt took care of. But, uh, as I, as I said, the warranty, uh, would be, um, uh, the same, uh, for Delicio going forward with the proposed contract extension.
Well, I'm going to take a little time out from the concrete and talk a little bit about asphalt. We still have, uh, we're, we're looking at county roads again, but we also want to pay, uh, pay attention to our city streets, as well as some, or, some county roads that are asphalt that are, have kind of been missed. Um, first and foremost is the, the section of Long Lake between I seventy-five and the Glens. Um, that is a piece of asphalt that, uh, we've started to take quite a few calls on. Um, it is something that's under the, uh, this contract that was let last year, so it'll be done this spring as soon as the weather allows, uh, by Cadillac. And then two, uh, new projects that we're proposing to use, uh, public act two fifty-two money, which is a one-time, um, source of funds from the general fund from the state. Um, and Square Lake at Coolidge and then Crooks Road, uh, north of Big Beaver, it's the section in between the concrete, um, and the newer asphalt overlay to the north. And then two large projects, uh, Waddles Road, three miles of overlay, um, between Coolidge and Rochester, and then Section nineteen, which is, we're, we're actually going to do the north half, uh, before June thirtieth, and then the south half, which runs from Palmerston to the south. That would be, uh, after July one. So this is just, uh, an aerial showing the location. We have taken, I've taken quite a few calls. As soon as the weather starts to warm up, questions about roads start to pop up, and this one stands out like a sore thumb because there's been a, a lot of work done to the west and a lot of work done to the east. So this one, it will be done this, this spring, uh, about a hundred fifty thousand, that's a hundred percent state funds, so no city dollars involved in that one. Uh, this would be the first of the, uh, kind of the new, uh, intersection overlays, Coolidge at Square Lake, and what we're looking at is it, kind of a typical three-inch mill out the pavement and then resurface it with new asphalt, um, try and get rid of all the rutting and shoving and whatnot that's going on at the intersection. And then this section of Crooks, uh, north of Big Beaver, this one is, uh, another one that we've taken lots of calls on because it also sticks out kind of like a sore thumb because it's, uh, to the south, the pavement is very good, to the north, the pavement is very good, so it's just a, a piece that's kind of, uh, been forgotten. Um, so this would also use that PA two fifty-two money. Uh, this is a capital funded project that you'll see, you'll see more of me when, uh, budget time comes around a little bit closer. Um, and this is one of the big projects. This is all, uh, city capital funds, so about a million and a half to overlay three miles of Waddles. And then Steve's going to talk a little bit, he's going to go back on concrete.
Thank you.
Okay, tri-party, this is a program that's been around for a lot of years. It's, uh, administered by Oakland County, and, uh, Oakland County, over the last, uh, four or five years, uh, they've cut back, and our annual allotment now is three hundred thousand. It used to be double that, and we've used this for all sorts of things over the years. Um, the county, um... Uh, the county, uh, administers this program, as I said, and the funds, uh, come from the city. There's a one-third from the city, one-third from Oakland County, and one-third from the Road Commission for Oakland County. And, uh, you can spend it as, uh, any way you want, so long as you spend it on a county road. Uh, that's the, the requirement. And in the past years, we've used it for, uh, road repairs, uh, spot repairs on John R., um, on Big Beaver, and on Crooks Road, and, uh, for other, um, items as well, such as, uh, paying our share of, uh, uh, county work, uh, where we, a federal project may require, um, a city share in that, uh, road project. The proposed, uh, tri-party work, uh, for this year, um, and I should mention that there will be an agreement coming to city council, uh, shortly, uh, from, uh, the Road Commission, um, which will spell out the, uh, the terms of the agreement, which is three hundred thousand, and, uh, where exactly we want to, to spend it. So we are proposing that, uh, this year's tri-party funds be spent on, uh, John R. Road, uh, North Pound at Maple. Uh, this is a section of John R. that was outside of our project limits last year. Last year, we, uh, we stopped at, uh, Maple, and, uh, the limits were Maple up to, uh, Long Lake. Uh, this is, uh, this area right here has been identified as being in very poor condition, and we intend to replace the concrete there. Uh, we also, uh, look to replace the concrete, uh, under I seventy-five on Livernoy. Uh, this section was not done in two thousand and seven when Maple Road was, um, was overlaid, and in fact, in two thousand and seven, um, we applied our tri-party funds to that, uh, overlay, uh, project in two thousand and seven. Those are the proposed, uh, roads that we intend to use the tri-party funds for. Also, we intend to, uh, take care of a location on, uh, Livernoy, just, uh, north of, of, um, Big Beaver, uh, which was not done, uh, a couple of years ago when the county did the, uh, resurfacing of, of Livernoy from here to, uh, I think it was, um, Square Lake. Next slide. Tom Darling is going to...
If I could, Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Tom.
Great. I'd like to comment on this slide. Uh, remaining costs for these road projects are estimated around two million dollars. We're proj, we're, uh, proposing the use of unassigned general fund fund balance to fund these road projects. What you see before you is the level of unassigned fund balance that we have, as Mr. Kishnik first, uh, alluded to, we have a policy of keeping unassigned fund balance between twenty and thirty percent. Uh, at the end of two thousand and fourteen, you can see our unassigned general fund fund balance was around forty-four percent, uh, based on, uh, some favorable, uh, transactions for that year. Uh, when we did, originally did the two thousand and fifteen budget, we budgeted unassigned fund balance to come in around twenty-five percent. Our current projections for the end of two thousand and fifteen looks like, and conservatively so, around thirty-two percent. Uh, based on, on that, our, again, our recommendation is that two million dollars to fund this project come from unassigned fund balance, which will get us closer to our goal of being under thirty percent.
So the direction, directives are what's next after, you've, you've seen the program, you've seen some of the funding sources, and the two million dollars is really what we are coming to counsel with tonight, and that would be, the next item on the agenda would be the, to appropriate two million from general fund fund balance for this segment replacement on these roads, Big Beaver, John R., and Dequinder, um, to enhance our infrastructure. And the second after that would be the award, the contract extension to Delicio Contracting to allow us to get going right now, uh, utilizing a contract that, uh, we're familiar with, and we think that, based on the market condition, the prices are, are good, given the, uh, the price increases that are happening in the industry. Um, so those are the, uh, those are the two main things, uh, for tonight, then approval to bid out the asphalt overlay utilizing PA two fifty-two dollars, um, that was the supplemental appropriation. That's, those are the roads that, um, Mr. Hootery talked about, that he affectionately calls skip patching. Um, it's, it's, it's really, actually, it was my term, skip patching, he won't take credit for it at all, but these are those areas that seem to be missed, and, you know, you skip over good concrete and you have asphalt. I think, uh, uh, Councilmember Henderson and I think you, Mayor, uh, took me around and showed me, uh, Crooks Road north of Big Beaver, uh, you know, how bad that asphalt section is, especially if you ride a motorcycle, I guess, it's, um...
Very bumpy.
It's very washboard-y. Um, so anyway, this is our attempt, uh, to increase the investment in our roads, and this will not have any impact on the May fifth sales tax, uh, election. That money is still, uh, scheduled to be, if approved, would be channeled through the Act fifty-one, uh, formula, which would come back to the city, and we would have ample use for the additional million dollars a year, which is what it would be, uh, projected, I should say, the projections I've seen, to generate for the city. So we're, we have, we have basically the two, the two million and the Delicio contract, which are the next two items on the agenda.
Questions from council? Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
So I understand, is, if we spend this two million, it's going to take us down to about thirty percent? It'll be our fund balance?
Based on, yes, I'm sorry.
Roughly?
Roughly, yes.
Again...
Again, with conservative estimates.
Well, I've never seen you do a conservative estimate. Okay, great.
And that's keeping with our policy that we chose to take fund balance and factor it back into infrastructure issues from year to year. Not to say that, two years from now, that that would be there.
That's correct, Mayor. And it does say one-time expenditures, which infrastructure is, and that's the fiscally prudent way to approach it.
Any other questions? Councilman Pennington.
If there's no other questions, I'd like to move I-5, the 2015 Troy Concrete Pavement Replacement Program and Budget Amendment as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Pennington, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve I-5, which is a 2015 Troy Concrete Pavement Replacement Program and Budget Amendment, as printed in the agenda. Discussion.
Mayor? Mayor?
Councilwoman Hoderick.
I just wanted to make the comment, I beat this dead horse. I apologize to my fellow council members, but I get this question and commentary a lot. In terms of protecting our bond rating, this is exactly how we should be using these dollars, is for infrastructure. This is consistent with protecting our AAA bond rating.
Thank you. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-6 is on the table. Councilman Gottlieb.
I'd like to move that I-6 Standard Purchasing Resolution 3, exercise renewal option concrete slab replacement program, be adopted Resolution Number 2015-03, as printed.
Support. Moved by Councilman Gottlieb and supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve I-6, the Standard Purchasing Resolution 3, which is to exercise a renewal option concrete slab replacement program, as printed in the agenda. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
I-7 is a revision to the 2014-
Could I just say one thing on I-6?
Yes.
And get back to, so I just wanted to be clear on the directives. There was an asphalt overlay that we did not, we will be bidding out, and that will come back to council. I just wanted everyone to be aware of that. That's also part of this plan.
Understood.
Okay.
Let's take a five-minute break. We'll be back in five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a reminder that city administration wanted to give to all of the Troy residents who own dogs. On behalf of Oakland County, we wanted to remind residents that own dogs that their dog licenses need to be renewed by May 31 in order to avoid the $30 per dog late fee. Dog licenses can be renewed at the Police Records Department on the second floor of City Hall. You can call them at 248-524-3437. Or you can renew your license online at the Oakland County website, which is oakgov.com/petadoption.
Thank you. Any questions on I-8? I-9, the Proposed Amendment Agreement with Somerset Collection, with an introduction by Chief of Police, Mayor. And guests. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening.
Mayor and council, good evening once again. We are here tonight to present a proposed amended agreement to add one police officer to the current officer who is assigned to the Somerset Collection. With me tonight is the General Manager of the Somerset Collection, John Mizak, and Lieutenant Chris Stout. Chris has been working on this project with John and our law department. I'm happy to report that we had a very good result by placing the one officer at the Somerset Collection. The already low crime rate has been reduced even more, and the final patrol activity's gone up. So it's going in the right direction. It's very good. Mr. Mizak wanted to address a little bit on how good things are going and why we're here tonight. John?
Good evening, John.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I just want to reiterate what the chief said as far as how the program's been going and the agreement's been going. Incidents are down. Response time is better. Response time by patrol officers is down. As for Somerset Collection and the Forbes Company, we are very proactive in our partnership with law enforcement and the city. We want to provide a safe and secure environment for anyone in the area and on our property, inside and out. And I think the addition of the one officer has been very productive, very proactive in meeting those kinds of initiatives that we've had. And I think that adding an additional officer will only enhance that and make the area safer, make Somerset safer, a safer place for everyone to be at. So I appreciate your time and effort tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Mayor and council--
Could you use the microphone, Chris? Thank you.
This is a fully funded position through Somerset Collection, and if you guys have any other questions, I'll answer them the best I can.
Thank you. Any questions from council? It's pretty easy when it's fully funded, you know. Makes it easy for us. But it's always been a great relationship with the collection, and, John, it's always good to see you. Thank you. Somebody like to move the resolution? Councilman Henderson.
Move I-9 as printed.
Support. Moved by Councilman Henderson and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell that we approve I-9, the Proposed Amendment Agreement with Somerset Collection as printed. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Houdorick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. I-10 is Camp Tigandaroga Capital Project's Extension Request with an introduction by Elaine Boe, our Recreation Director. And I see--
This is Linda Agley with Glatton Inc.
Good evening.
She's here tonight. They've operated Camp Tigandaroga since late 1995. In 2011, their lease was negotiated with a lower lease payment so that they could make $180,000 of capital project improvements on the property. This lease will expire May 1st of 2016. Projects they've completed so far, permanent outdoor deck gutters with lighting system, new outdoor deck heaters, upgraded four restrooms completely with granite countertop sinks, faucets and toilet stalls, replace and upgrade second-floor emergency exit awnings, new baseboard heaters in the main dining room, enlarge basement walk-in cooler to meet health codes and increase beer capabilities, and replace and upgrade three emergency exits. Glatton Inc. is requesting an extension to the original October 2014 deadline in order to complete 53,402 more of improvements. They're requesting the deadline be May 1st of 2016 to complete these projects.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything on the area you all said?
No, I just, we fully intend to replace all of the windows facing the golf course and on the fright side of the building, and I assume that alone will exceed the 53,000. And what else? There are a few more things we intended to do, but would appreciate, we had a tough year last year. Our fire suppression system froze, and it was a huge mess and a huge expense to get that all repaired. They did a good job because it sailed through this year, and it was even colder than last year. So that held us back a little bit on discretionary income that in the course, although they were great working with, but the golf course was, half of it was closed until, I think, July. So our income over the summer was down a little bit. So we asked for an extension, and we will get it done and keep the building up and improve it, keep it looking good.
Thank you. Any questions from council? I appreciate, it's always been a good partnership with the city and--
The city of Troy has been very good landlords for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Would somebody like to move the resolution if there aren't any questions? Councilman Gottlieb.
Move that we adopt Resolution I-10 as printed.
Support. Moved by Councilman Gottlieb and supported by Councilman Henderson that we approve I-10, which is Camp Tigandaroga Capital Project's Extension Request as printed in the agenda. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Houdorick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I-11 is the 2015-16 Strategies with an introduction by City Manager Kishnik.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is the culmination of the retreat that we held, finding the balance, that I believe everyone participated in, and hopefully everyone had a good and productive time. We also brought this, the top 10 strategies and the sort of the ranking of each internally in my office, and then took it to a staff meeting last week to further refine it. And you have the top 10 strategies now. We'll remind you, when we did this two years ago, it was the top 12. When we did it last year, it was the top 11. So this year, fortunately, we've got it down to top 10 strategies, and this is what will guide us throughout the year and in the budget process.
Any questions from council? Looked good to me. I think it was a very productive discussion that we had, and I'd say that's a good solution to what we all discussed there, I thought. Somebody like to move this resolution? Councilwoman Houdorick.
I'll move I-11 as printed.
Support. Moved by Councilwoman Houdorick and supported by Councilman Henderson that we approve I-11, which is the 2015-16 Strategies as presented by the City Manager and printed in the agenda. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Houdorick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Can I use these in the State of the City address now?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Next is the Consent Agenda. Is there any item that council wishes to pull from the Consent Agenda this evening? Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move all items on a Consent Agenda as printed.
Support. Support. Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell, that we approve all items on the Consent Agenda as presented in the agenda this evening. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Houdorick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. I made it through the whole council meeting last week.
I did for a while.
Yeah.
And the one before that?
I'm going to need that sign again.
Okay.
If you are here on a Consent Agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next are Memorandums and future council agenda items. I don't see that there are any this evening. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no council referrals. Next is council comments. Any comments from council this evening? I have one announcement, if I could. As I indicated with our brand-new strategies, we will be having a State of the City address on March 25 at the Somerset Inn. We will be highlighting the current state of the community and offer a glimpse into Troy's future, as this year's State of the City address will be Wednesday, March 25, at the Somerset Inn again. It'll be 11:00 AM lunch, 11:45, and the State of the City address will begin at 12:30. Cost is $20 per person. Please see Cindy Stewart, the Community Affairs Director, for tickets. It'd be nice to have a nice showing there this year. This is the first year we've done this in about three, and I know Councilman Teetz has been prodding me to do this for three years, and I've decided to do it, and now he's not going to be there. Councilman Teetz?
Wonderful news, at least for me. I will be there, so I will be waiting with bated breath. I misunderstood the date initially, so I look forward to a stunning address in the spirit of JFK, RFK, MLK, Barack, Obama. So I look forward to this.
Well, it's nice that you would come now.
Looking forward to it.
Look forward to you participating in it.
I am excited, very excited.
Any other council comments this evening? Next are reports. I know I was asked by staff to bring to attention O-2A, which is the Evergreen Farmington Sewer Disposal System. I think it'd be imperative for all council members to make sure that they read that. It's a project that's been going on for quite some time, and it looks like there's finally going to be something done about this issue and problem. I don't know, Brian, if you wanted to say anymore about that or not?
Well, it's a project that's been talked about since 2002, so it predates me significantly, but it has to do with sewer backups up in sort of the northwest corner of the city, and it's a multi-jurisdictional project. Originally scheduled, it cost about 18 million, and it looks like it might be closer to five. So it has been budgeted for for many years in the sewer fund. So the funds are there, it's just a matter of the project moving forward.
And once again, I think you're saying that years ago, Troy started putting money away. Most of the cities that are involved in this were not doing that, and they're probably going to have to find financing some other way. So just another credit to how our city was managed from years past. O-3, correction, O-2C is a report on the new city logo process. I don't think city management's looking for a direction today, but council should be thinking about this and where we want to go from here. Any other discussion on reports? No one has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. We will have a closed session this evening, so we will adjourn to closed session and meet in the boardroom.